Good afternoon. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Mayor Protem Getta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
All right. Councilmember Laloe, would you do us the honor, please, of leading us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
... of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To original people of this land, the Neoson people, the Sardan Madu, Valiant Plains, Mewok, Patwin, Winton peoples, and the people of Wilton Ranch, who are Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in an active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation of Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To everyone, members of the public, especially my colleagues and members of the city staff, let me begin with a special acknowledgement. I don't know that I actually have a resolution, but is Paratransit here? Is Tiffany? Everyone, come on up. Hi. Who's behind these masks? Happy Halloween.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am Tiffany Fink. I'm the chief executive officer at Paratransit, Inc., and I'm joined by Lisa Capillari, our chief financial officer, Christine Brown, our chief administrative officer, and Jesse Isaacson, our director of information technology.
So we just wanted to take a moment as a city council to recognize and to thank Paratransit for making an extraordinary contribution to our community and especially to those who are having the toughest of times. Now, Paratransit has a pretty clear mission, which is very important in and of itself. If this all you did, we would probably honor you as well, and that is to provide transportation access to people with various special needs, people with disabilities, the elderly, and others. And you've done that in an outstanding way for decades here in this community. But why this recognition for me, and I think for the council, is important is because people are always looking for heroes and heroines in the midst of tough times and in the midst of crisis. And in the midst of COVID, Paratransit decided, just because it wanted to, and it felt the duty to, to lift light in an extraordinary fashion by leading the community effort around Great Plates and other programs to distribute food to seniors and to people in need. And the number of meals that your organization, your drivers, your staff, delivered to people was in the tens of thousands, if not the hundreds of thousands. And you did it in addition to everything else that you do. And then when I think about what we celebrated last Monday out at the Paratransit headquarters, where you're taking the leap to organize a number of other important nonprofits in the community and take some risk and donate your land for the development of 200-plus units of affordable and supportive housing, you're worthy of recognition and thanks. And that's all we wanted to do today. I wish I could hand you a gold pen, but I hope that you know in our hearts here how much this city values all that you are doing, all that you have done, and all that you continue to do. Thank you. Let me, was this a silver pen? Oh. I do have a silver pen. I cannot speak to the value.
Here's a City of Sacramento.
Oh, here's a City of Sacramento pen. Anyways, let's hear from my colleagues, and then we'll hear from you, and it's a good way to start our meeting. All right. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just really wanted to take this opportunity, Tiffany, just to say congratulations to you and Paratransit and all the amazing partners, Alchemists, Mills on Wheels, for this exciting grant that you all received, $172,000 to really launch this program. And I'm really excited about it because this program will actually operate in South Sacramento. Every Thursday from 9:00 to 1:00, there'll be two shuttles providing transit from the Pinnell Community Center to the Foreign Farmers Market. And so that's super exciting. I think you heard it from the mayor earlier that Paratrans is absolutely innovative, right? Always showing up, stepping up, from the housing now to food delivery, even during the pandemic. And really just want to say thank you so much to you, Tiffany, for your leadership. You know, you didn't wait around for anyone. You didn't wait around for any elected official. You saw the need, and you just filled in the gap. And so I think receiving the grant is a big testament to the work that you have been doing during the pandemic and the work that they know is so needed, especially in South Sacramento. And so I'm just really excited that our seniors and our families, who can now actually have transit, be able to go to the farmers market, working with Alchemists as well. And there's going to be a standing shuttle. And so that's something to celebrate, right, for our community. And so, again, just congratulations to you, your vision, your leadership, and to all of the partners involved with this grant as well, Mills on Wheels and the Alchemists. So congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. So, super proud of Paratransit. Wanted to just tell this story that I know they did a lot with food delivery, including out in our neck of the woods. But also, Mayor, we had a media issue during COVID about seniors having trouble getting to our vaccination clinic, a vaccination clinic which, by the way, was in Councilmember Harris's district at Natomas High, but we championed together, and Karina Talamontis was running point on for the city. But for the school district, one of the people running point is a guy named Doug Orr, familiar to Ms. Fink as her brother. So she was volunteering at that clinic all the time and actually heard about this need before I did, and then volunteered Paratransit. And next thing I knew, Paratransit was out there on a routine basis, bringing seniors from the senior communities. You guys may know that there are a lot of low-income inclusionary housing units in Natomas, and Paratransit did an excellent job of focusing on folks that lived in those apartment complexes, but particularly the seniors, and getting them down to the vaccination clinic. And it was a big undertaking because we actually, you know, these vaccinations happen in the car. So the way that worked is a healthcare professional boarded the Paratransit bus and actually vaccinated all the people on it. So it was a really big deal. And Tiffany, it was all about your innovation. Highest-ranking woman in a transportation role in our region, and I'm really proud of you, really proud to know you and call you a friend. I know your family is very proud of you, and I know your dad would be really proud of you.
Councilmember Chenier.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to put an exclamation mark on what the mayor was talking about on the housing project. What you've done, I think, in organizing and helping to organize a lot of groups that take care of transition-age youth and city-year kids and others is so important. And what it shows is that partnership between the city and nonprofit organizations that are well-run can be very much a win-win situation, both for the city and for the community that you so ably represent. So I just want to say thank you. I think, Mayor, it's 260 units that we're looking at of attainable housing, which I think will be a model as we move forward. I think the city subsidy on those will be under $40,000 per unit, which is just a remarkable thing if we're going to really get after this housing crisis. So thank you very much. Appreciate that, and congratulations.
Excellent. Mayor Protem Getta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, you know, one of the greatest conversations that I had was with Tiffany and her staff about recognizing how not only housing, but transportation are the two major factors that are impacting so many folks. And for any of us who, you know, who have gassed up recently, you know, that's a huge issue. Seeing the escalation in transportation costs is affecting everyone. And even ownership, just being able to own a vehicle, insurance, gas, maintenance, all those pieces, but by being able to link transportation and housing, we're really hitting at creating some breathing room, just some gasping for air to help families get back on their feet and help folks who are in much need. And lastly, I just wanted to say, you know, I talked to so many of my local business owners in my area, small business owners, who, you know, because of the Great Plates and their relationship, you know, with Paratransit, you guys helped keep them afloat. They have always, nonstop, talking about how courteous and how supportive you all were. And so I just want to thank you again in every aspect, not just our neighbors that you serve, but on the housing side, the transportation side, helping our businesses. It's just that creativity, we can't thank you enough. So thank you, Tiffany, and all of the folks at Paratransit.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments, Mayor Protem. Tiffany, did you want to say a couple things? Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much for this recognition. I'm really honored to be here tonight. And this is really, truly about partnership. So we get our innovation when we have supportive partners who can help us achieve the dreams we have. You know, if you think back a couple years ago, we were here talking about the services we used to provide with regional transit and what would we do next. And I'd like to tell people, this is what we planned to do next. We knew there was a lot more that could be done in this community if we had the bandwidth. And so we were very fortunate to be able to have an amazing team surround us to do First Family Meal, which was the brainchild of five restaurants downtown, kind of spearheaded by Clay Nutting and Patrick Mulvaney, who are still our partners going forward. And it was just a question of, we have people, we have resources, we have to help. And we had a staff who didn't want to stay at home, who wanted to help these people because they knew this was the only way they were going to get food or they were going to see someone. And so we want to thank you as the city for that. We're very excited about what's coming with housing. We feel that it really is this integration about transportation and housing. They're the two largest cost factors, and so if we can change the model for one, you have to address the other. And by bringing together nonprofits to be able to use our resources, the idea is it doesn't take one of us to do it on any of these projects. It's the idea that the strengths of each of us together are much stronger than us on our own. And so we just kind of look at it as our role is to help facilitate and fill in where we can, and so we're thankful for this opportunity. For Councilmember Vang, thank you for mentioning the USDA grant. We will be working some Mills on Wheels and Alchemists. We're excited. We see it as a pilot. It is part of what the White House has addressed as one of the largest needs in the United States, which is transportation access for food. So we're very excited that this is a pilot project here in Sacramento that the nation can watch. But we're not just going to leave it to that pilot. We're already having plans, looking at the downtime and the midday of our schedule to say, how can we reallocate that to not only start this one, but to start with working with you, to look at the other farmers markets, and how we can get people in other portions of Sacramento to them. We don't want to just wait to try it. We want to get it going and immediately start talking about what's next, which I think I really credit to staff that we're already thinking about the next thing. And so with that, we just want to thank you for this. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up, it is the holiday season. Our holiday drive is underway, and we're going to be delivering over 2,200 boxes to seniors and persons with disabilities who receive our food boxes. We deliver to every one of your districts. So if you have any interest in coming out and seeing what we do every day, getting to meet these people, I know several of you have in the past and are participating in some way this year, I encourage you. We can put you on. You can meet the people who are changing their life, give them a little bit of holiday spirit at the same time, and really see what we're trying to do every day. And we stand as your partner, ready to see what the next issue is that we can help you with.
We have many priorities, so. Thank you very much, you guys. Give me a big hand. The silver pen is on its way. Members, let us move to the consent calendar. Are there items, I understand, Councilmember Harris, you would like to take up nine separately? Okay. Are there any other items that members would like to be either heard separately, voted on separately? Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, I have a comment on nine as well, but I'll comment after my colleague. And I have a comment on two, but I don't need it to be pulled.
Okay, comment. Very good. Councilmember Vang?
Mayor, I just want to pull any items. Just wanted to comment on item 14.
Comment on item 14. Okay, so nobody is pulling off for separate votes, so let's take.
No, I am.
Oh, you are. I misunderstood.
Nine is for a separate vote.
Nine is for a separate vote. Okay, so then let us take comment on all items, then we'll take motions, okay? On item number two, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to ask the clerk if she would call the Public Library Authority and explain to them how you're handling this, please, because Councilmember Vang and I talked about this last weekend. They could use a little help administratively on how you're achieving this goal still, which I think is really good and prudent, but they're not, and it's complicating their process.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's have a comment, Councilmember Vang, on item 14.
Thanks, Mayor. This is the local agency technical, the LADA Grant Program, and I really just wanted to take this moment to thank, say thank you to city staff, Maria, Darren, and the entire just IT staff for all the great work that they're doing in our city, really regarding our digital equity program. As many of you know, since the pandemic, you know, our community has really shown the need for digital equity more than ever. We know that Internet is essential to survival. Obviously, it needs to be seen as a public utility, but that's a conversation for another day. But we know that the need for digital access is so important, and so with the increase of telework, folks working from home, telehealth, and even how our community now receives information, you know, our community, we have to make sure that we have fast and reliable broadband Internet and Internet service so that many of our families and communities don't fall behind. And so this summer, I actually wrote a letter in support of this grant. And so when Darren emailed our office to let us know that we received the grant, I was super excited. And again, just really wanted to take this opportunity to thank city staff for their heart and hustle and everything they're doing around digital equity to make sure that our most vulnerable families and youth have access to Wi-Fi in the city. And so just wanted to say congratulations to staff for their hard work.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Harris, you have comments on nine and 17, and then Councilmember Vang also on item nine.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you had a comment on nine.
Angelique wanted to speak.
Oh, it was Vice Mayor. Never mind. Go ahead, Jeff, you first, then Angelique.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. On item 17, this is about the coordinated access system that we are collaborating with the county on. This is really a vital missing piece to our response to homelessness, and I'm very encouraged that we're co-investing with the county on this so that we can collect HMIS data on all the people that we encounter and share that data amongst service providers. I think it's going to create an efficiency that will really help us move forward with our response to homelessness. So I'm very excited that this is coming finally and that we are investing in it equally with the county. So on number nine, I've pulled it for a separate vote. So I've been the chair and vice chair of our flood control agency for the last five years, and at SAFCA, we decided to apportion our votes such that we supported the incumbents on RD 1,000 for the following reason. Being on the LMA or a local maintaining agency is actually pretty technical work, and at this point, the RD 1,000 board has a very functional board that the executive director would like to keep. So instead of accepting staff recommendation to split the votes amongst all the candidates running for the seats that are available, I would like to make a motion to apportion the votes so that one-third goes to each incumbent, and the final third is distributed equally amongst the other candidates for the seat. So that is my motion, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
On this item, I am okay with one-third and one-third to each of the two incumbents, but I would like to assign the other third to Nate Pelzhar. And so I'd like to make a substitute motion to Councilmember Harris's motion and see if I have a second for many of my colleagues.
You talked about this, the Councilmember Harrison.
With.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember.
We mentioned it briefly, but there was a Brown Act issue, so we really couldn't discuss it.
You want to respond to the substitute motion? Just, I'd like to hear if there's.
Well, yeah.
It's partly controversial, Mayor. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's seconded. Councilmember Harris, do you want to?
You know, I can live with that outcome.
Okay, very good. Okay, we've got to wait to see if there's public testimony on this item, but that motion, that substitute motion is now in the books. Now let's get a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar, items one through eight and 10 through 18.
I'll move.
Moved and seconded. Let's hear public testimony on any of the consent items.
So on the remainder of the consent, it was a motion by Harris, a second by Getta?
Yes.
Thank you. And I do have three speakers. I wanted to remind members of the public, if you would like to speak on an agenda item when the item begins, if you're in council chambers, please fill out a speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, raise your hand. After the first speaker, we'll no longer accept speaker slips, and the raise hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. Our first speaker is Pat Ferris on item three, and then Stephen Barassa on item 16.
Good afternoon. The agreement between the City of Sacramento and J.P. Morgan Chase shouldn't be extended if the city is at all concerned about climate crisis and its contribution. This is one of the most important considerations that the council can make, and it should not be on the consent agenda. I represent both Third Act National and Third Act Sacramento. We're seniors over 60 years old who are especially concerned with the climate crisis. J.P. Morgan Chase is the largest funder of fossil fuels in the world. Since the Paris Climate Agreement in 2015, Chase has invested more than $382 billion into tar sands, Arctic drilling, and fracking, more than any other bank in the world. But the top climate scientists, including at the International Energy Agency and the United Nations, tell us there's no more room for fossil fuel expansion in our carbon budget if we're to limit climate change to survivable degree. Other cities are taking the responsible action to move their money investments. The City of Davis, for example, divested from Wells Fargo due to their lending practices with fossil fuel companies, and instead is now serviced by River City Bank. Other options exist capable of servicing large institutions and municipalities, two of which are First Republic and Silicon Valley Bank. A relatively recent report, the Carbon Bank Rule Report, reveals that for many of the world's largest companies, institutions, and municipalities, the carbon footprint generated by their investments in cash held in big banks are a significant source.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Yeah. I heard about this four hours ago. Had we heard about it before, we'd have 100 people here.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Stephen Barassa.
Good evening, City Council. I'm a senior member of the gay community, and I remember a time when gays and lesbians serving on the police department had to keep their sexual orientation a secret or face serious discrimination and backlash. Today, it's surprising to me that I'm standing here in defense of the police department against discrimination against the gay and lesbian community, specifically the LGBT center, as part of a nationwide political agenda to smear the police and to create mistrust with our police. Back in 2019, the LGBT center decided they would ban uniformed officers from participating in the parade and the festivities at the Pride event. But in a last 11th-hour meeting with Chief Hahn and the LGBT center and others, they crafted a deal where the police department created a community advisory committee, new officer training, community forums, enhanced LGBTQ liaison position, and a center complaint reporting program. Now, so they were able to participate that year in 2019. Flash forward to 2022, and the policy is back, where again, they banned police officers to participate in uniform. Also, I'd like to highlight that back then, the center also received interim center and, I think, $750,000 toward their new center and other things. So I think it's important that if they receive funding from the city, that it's contingent upon the center providing an inclusive environment that includes uniformed officers being able to participate with distinction, especially the gay and lesbian officers who really were impacted by this decision. I know a young man, police officer in Midtown, who was really broken up about this. He's no longer in Sacramento. He moved away, and he was a great guy. So please consider this. I support the funding, but I think it should be contingent on inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ed Perez. Ed's our final speaker on the consent calendar.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Ed Perez, and I'm actually one of the candidates running for the Reclamation District 1,000, RD 1,000 Board of Trustees. And originally, I was going to speak to you today to thank the city council for what I thought would be a routine vote on allocating the city's votes on RD 1,000 equally among the seven candidates that are running. And I see now that there's a motion on the floor that would do something different. Interestingly, you know, I'm president of my local HOA, and we just received our ballot as well, and I actually made a comment to one of our board members that we should use the city's system of allocating our association's votes, particularly since I'm running and I'm the president of the HOA. But I did want to mention one other thing, and that is, I think the original system the city had of equally distributing the votes is much fairer system, particularly since RD 1,000 has made great strides in really doing outreach to get more people interested in running for these trustee positions. And the idea of somehow allocating a significant number of votes to incumbents just kind of run contrary to opening up the process. So I urge you to consider going back to your original, the staff recommendation, which is to equally distribute the votes among the seven, I believe, qualified candidates. So again, thank you for your time. And flood season, by the way, starts today, and I did mail my ballot in the mail, and Mother Nature reminded us the importance of RD 1,000's role in flood protection. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Before we vote on the motion, I know Councilmember Valenzuela had a question or concern based upon some of the public testimony here. Go ahead.
Yes, and apologies for only seeing some of the email correspondence just now, but thank you for coming to talk about item three. I've asked the city manager if it would be okay to pull this till the 15th so that we can maybe have a meeting with the treasurer and then bring it back for a fuller discussion. So is that okay?
I want to defer to the treasurer. I'm sending him a text message now on the 11/15. There might be a staffing issue.
Sorry, John, I didn't see you back there.
Yeah, thank you. I actually had a conversation with Ms. Whitney this afternoon about what we could potentially do about this situation. She's going to get with her constituents and talk about potentially finding another bank, because what we do is very complicated, and there's no small savings alone, there's no credit unions, there's no little banks that can do what we do, what we need done. So she's going to get back to me. We can actually void this contract, we can get out of this contract within 60 days after we decide, but we'd have to go through a full RFP process. So this contract goes through December 23rd. At that point, we lose our banking.
Okay.
So I've had conversations with Ms. Whitney, and we came to a decision, but it's up to you guys if you want to defer. My banking operation manager, who actually created the contract, is out on 11/15. She moves. She's going on vacation, so.
You're saying if we vote to approve this tonight, we still have an opportunity to change that within?
We still can, we can get out of the contract within 60-day notice with Chase. And then we'd have to go through a full RFP process to create a new bank. But this contract ends December 23rd, so at that point, we'd be out of contract.
And it sounds like the person staffing it isn't going to be here on the 15th, and so we're in a little bit of a.
Right. About the 20th, that's Thanksgiving is the 22nd.
Yeah, I think we're.
We're running out of time here. We do have meetings in December, of course.
Right.
We could-
We could defer to that.
Is that okay?
Kim, do you see there's a problem?
Gives us a chance to-
You want to come up there, Kim, for a second, please? She's with the banking operations-
I give that thing else, it'll just give us some chance to maybe have some further conversation, which it sounds like you've already started, and so if people feel like they know what the path forward to divesting is, if that's what we do.
Hi.
Hi, Councilwoman Mayor. I'm Kim Gladon, Banking Operations Manager. Any questions you have for me, I'm happy to answer. But it sounds like you want to give some time to-
I'm sorry, just-
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sounds like you want to give some time to have some further discussion. As City Treasurer mentioned, we spoke to members of the Third Act later, earlier this afternoon, and they were okay with our response and that we can get out of our contract if we have to at any point in time in the future. But we are running on a tight timeline in that the current contract expires in about a month.
If we voted on December the sixth, would that be a problem?
No. That'd be great.
Can I ask a question, just to clarify?
Yeah, go, go.
My understanding is you need a bank-
Absolutely.
And if we don't do this, you're out of contract, you won't have a bank on the 23rd.
That's correct.
So, and you have to go through an RFP process.
That's correct.
So I think the practical thing to do is say yes tonight, but with direction, to go through the RFP process for something else, and then you can do that.
So if we said no, if we said, just to clarify, Jay, so if we said no on the sixth, then we would run the risk of not having a bank by the 23rd? Is that the-
We'd probably have to renegotiate for further time, but I think we're required to go through an RFP process. We can't really sell-
No, and that's not my expected outcome here, Mayor. I think I'm just looking to give a few additional stakeholders some time to just understand the process and how it works, and I don't expect the outcome will unfortunately be any different, because I say unfortunately, not because you did a bad job, but because of the nature of banking institutions being what they are right now. But if we could identify a strategy, or at least give people some ideas of what we're looking for, then maybe we can help give people a good next step here.
Mayor? Yes.
So I tend to agree with Jay. I don't see a downside in passing this tonight and then furthering the conversation, considering that it would take an RFP process to change, which is going to be a big decision-making process for the council and will take time. You know, I think it's just as appropriate to pass it tonight as wait, because they already are our bank, and, you know, considering their contract would expire late December, we don't lose anything by passing it tonight, but we can further the conversation from this point about whether or not we want to change-
An idea. So I have an idea. I'm concerned a little bit about the potential, because it is a potential, that we would say no on the sixth after the due diligence, in which case the city might be stuck. So if we said yes tonight, but, Councilmember Valenzuela, we agreed to actually put the question of potentially getting out of it, you know, and we can decide whether or not to go forward with that or not on the sixth, we would then actually formally tee that, potentially tee that up for action, so we're just not forgetting about it. We bring it back, but the default would be we're going forward without the risk of losing any, of potentially not having-
Well, it's going to take six to nine months to do an RFP, right? So, I mean, we're not going to be able to switch over automatically. We're hopefully going to be with, talk with Third Act and find out, because they're going to do some due diligence on their own to see other large entities have found, larger municipalities have been able to find banks that can actually do what we do, because what we do is e-payables, we do a lot of, you know, online things. It's very, it's very rigorous work, so-
It's our vault, it's our custodial services, it's our P-cards, it's everything. It's a full conversion merchant.
I understand all of that, and just want to make clear that I am not expecting you would be able to do that between now and December 23rd, or again, that the outcome here would change, just trying to give the public some, like, some space to talk and understand this decision a little bit more. But if that's not the will of my colleagues, then I don't want to delay that either, so.
Well, we could certainly-
I don't see any harm either way, I guess, is what I'm saying, if we wait a couple weeks or if we do it tonight, so I think the outcome will-
If you guys approve it now, we can meet with the stakeholders in the interim and find out if there's actually a plan to move away from Chase.
Yeah, and if, right. So let's be clear, if, I think we approve it tonight, but we are going to keep this discussion open with every ability to bring it back to the agenda, either the sixth of December or soon thereafter, to have a different discussion if that, if the continued due diligence warrants that.
That works for us.
Is that okay? Okay. All right. So we've got two motions. We've got a motion on the majority of the consent calendar, other than item nine. Let's call the roll, please. Oh, all in favor? Please say aye. Opposed? That passes. Item nine, we have a substitute motion from Vice Mayor Ashby that's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? That passes. Nine to nothing. That's the consent calendar. Okay, item nineteen, the public hearings.
There's a present. Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Susanna Jackson, and I am the Chief Financial Officer at Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. So I'm going to share a big picture, highlights about what is happening at both the federal and state level, and how that impacts us here. Then we dive into specifics of our revenue and expenditures, and we wrap up the presentation with a short video. So this is a balanced budget for the period of January through December, incorporates the activities of the housing authorities of the city and the county of Sacramento, which includes various federal entitlement funds, local housing funds, and funds administered by the agency for the city and the county of Sacramento. So at the federal update level on housing, the president's initiative on what he would like to accomplish over the next five years includes a number of things, and some of them are expanded tax credits, HUD grants to support housing forward, and leveraging the American Rescue Plan funds for investments in affordable housing. Moving on to updates at the state level, there's a $2.7 billion within the budget that addresses homelessness and housing affordability, some of which is included below, which $650 million for homeless housing assistance and prevention, $500 million for a LITC program, infill infrastructure grants program, and Cal HFA's mixed income program. There is also $1 billion for shovel-ready projects throughout California's Housing Accelerator Program. Transitioning now to the agency budget and taking into account what's occurring at each level, federal and state, and how it applies to our budget, our total estimated resources that will be available for the 2023 years is $431.1 million. Most of these are at the federal level, which approximately 69% of our funding comes through the federal government. Many of these federal grants that are received are multi-year grants, so, meaning it's important that we use these grants that we receive within the year for anywhere between two and five years. Two examples of our federal programs include both the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which is our largest program, then followed by the Public Housing Program. I'll highlight these separately in the presentation later on. So looking at the state and local funding, the remaining amount is $133.00 million, and it comes from state and local resources, such as housing trust. So once again, you can see with the amount that comes from the federal and the state why it's so important that we need to be in the loop and understand what's happening at both levels. So this slide shows how the money will be used, broken out by category. So our total budget of expenditures is $340.1 million. We are estimating a total HAP payments available of $154.6, and this is the housing assistant payments through our Housing Choice Voucher Program. Capital projects, total $89.4 million. Salaries and benefits at $42 million. Services and supplies at 26. Public services at 9.7, and debt service at 2.2. So again, looking at the difference between the budgeted revenues and expenditures, it really comes into play of our multi-year grants that we receive. So this slide provides a four-year comparison. So again, looking at the $340.1 million that is budgeted for 2023. So in total, the estimated expenditures will decrease from last year for about $7 million. And you can see by category, most of this is attributed to the swing of expenditures in the emergency rental assistant payments. We've been in front of you many times talking about the SAR program and how it's impacted our area in providing that rental assistance. We do anticipate the funding to not continue far into 2023, so that's where that big decrease is. Additionally, we have increased expenditures in our public services to about $9.7 million. So briefly, over, doing an overcap of the HCV HAP money. So this is highlighting the largest program of ours. It represents the main housing assistant payment funding sources to the program. So it was approximately $115 million in 2020, and increases yearly to about $142.8 for this program specifically. The increase estimates are based on the rising costs for families to lease up in our area. Nationwide, the program is also expected to see a $2 billion increase in funding at the federal level, so that's why we are anticipating the increases. It's important to note that these funds are restricted to the Housing Assistant Payment Program, specifically for housing. Now, looking at the housing, public housing programs, you will see in 2021, it was a good year with about $21.6 million combined at both the city and county levels, and this was due to the CARES Act funds that came through. So as we move forward in '22 and '23, you will see the decrease, and it is for two reasons. So first, the CARES Act money obviously is not continuing into the future, so we are not anticipating any increase there. But additionally, for the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, where we are converting our public housing to continue and remain affordable but upgraded properties, and as that continues, the funding for this program will decrease. So at this time, we also have, I'd like to direct your attention to a short video that we have, and then we will take any questions you may have. So thank you for your-
All impressive.
So we are available for any questions you may have.
So we do have some members up here. Do we have public testimony? First, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have two speakers. Would you like those now?
Yes, please.
So the first is Macworthy, and then online is call-in user one. Macworthy?
Mainly, and somebody better wake up on this property, and especially nonprofit. We want to know what is the value of nonprofit property that they don't pay property tax? We want to know that, because that undermines your school districts. And also, we look at the HUD. Now, I have been told that you can buy a house with, when you own Section Eight. We want to know where is that information in the state of California? Now, we did see one person show up here tonight and talk about money. I've been begging folks to come in here and talk about money. We knew it was happening because we knew when the thing went down, who bought the commercial property and promised the city that they would be sure you get the tax, property tax. That's because the escrow account was sued because they're using that money on small contractors and not sharing it with the people that they was taking it in on a monthly basis. Property tax should be paid when you get it in your hand. Tell the people why you hold it, and you got certain time to collect it. Where does it sit? And some bank, you bank make money. Now, compare your charge card. You pay the interest on charge cards every month. Once upon a time, a few days ago, a charge card was predatory leaning. What got by? Because your property owners that owns property have to have the talent to pay sewer and garbage because their margin of profit is too small, and you could have other private people managing property here, too. And you could have other private people managing property here too, instead of SHRA. SHRA was developed to, to be the brain of paperwork, and that's all. Wake up, people. This thing is going to get more into a welfare status. Vouchers, look at your vouchers. That's the same thing as food stamps. Wake up.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is call-in user one online. Could you unmute?
Hello, hello, yes. This is Lambert calling in. And I'm, I'm always studying SHRA, and I learned something from Mr. Worthy just then. And at the same time, I wanted to always acknowledge what I see as integrity in Mrs. Rochelle Doscher. I hope I pronounced her name correctly. Anytime I see, I don't see her presenting it, but a lot of times, I see people that come up to the rostrum and speak. Even though I'm still confused on the mask mandate, I notice certain people take their mask off, and then certain people don't. So I personally am not clear on what that mask mandate is, based upon what people decide to do when they get up to that microphone. But outstanding presentation from the SHRA, and I'm always going to give credit to Ms. Doscher and her staff, because it gives me clarity on what the SHRA is. And thank you, Mr. Worthy, for putting his two cents on it so I could really understand this thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you very much, members of the public. Let's hear from our colleagues here. Councilmember Valenzuela first.
Thank you. Great job on the video. I love seeing lots of central city projects on that list. We were talking and working a lot together. So I want to thank the whole SHRA team who's here tonight, as well as obviously Rochelle and your leadership for all you're doing in the central city to try to protect and build more housing. That's been wonderful. You'll know from our conversation the other day that I'm going to ask a little bit about vouchers, because I just can't help myself. So I noticed in here just over, I think if I read it correctly, about $15 million in administration funding for the Housing Choice voucher program. Could you, I know you told it to me, but I guess just for the public generally, what some of the things that money goes towards?
So that, that is specific to the funding and the support of actually carrying out the program. So it is our staff who are working diligently with the members who, or the people who have vouchers, the landlords, and really just working the, their whole file. It takes a lot of effort. It's a lot of work. And it's really to support them, trying to, you know, do what we can to streamline all of our processes. So it's as efficient as possible, but it's specific to that.
Yeah, it takes a lot of work. I mean, we all heard the story, I think that was just a couple of weeks ago, of the woman who SHRA staff helped, and she went through, what, three, four different units before she was able to find one that worked. So if you could, I know this might be a hard question to answer. Can you ballpark how many people have vouchers but can't find housing right now?
I think it depends on the program. I do know on the slide, there was 230 of emergency, I think it was 230 or 260 of 200 of emergency housing vouchers specifically.
Total number of people who actually have vouchers who are out searching, I think that is your question, council member. There's about 1,400 people who currently are searching for housing with vouchers.
Yeah, that's a staggering number. So we recently came across a source, it was actually in a Business Journal article, that cited that there are over 5,000 vacant housing units in the county of Sacramento right now. So I guess the first question that came to my mind is, what tools do we have available to ensure compliance with fair housing laws and especially income discrimination? Because I know technically, it's not illegal in California anymore. We passed a law that said you can't discriminate. But I know part of what haunted me about that story we heard at the 2:00 PM meeting was just, how do you prove that? You know, when, when you see something happening that feels like maybe they're not getting a fair shake because they have a voucher?
Well, there is a renters hotline that we help fund that allows people to get assistance and actually know what their rights are. Also, Legal Services of Northern California is another great resource that we refer people to so that they can actually assist people when they feel that they have been a victim of housing discrimination as well.
Okay. Yeah, I know that it's required for us to look at how we affirmatively further fair housing, one of my favorite acronyms in housing policy. So I'd actually love to keep the conversation going on this. And I don't know if that means coming back to council, because what I think about when I look at that many people with vouchers who can't find housing and that many vacant units, is that either we've got a lot of units that are being kept vacant above fair market rent, which is one set of questions I have as to why that is and what we could do. Or there's the other end of the equation, which is, are there people who aren't getting access to those units who might even be at fair market? And what we could be doing to affirmatively put forward some policy mechanisms to give you all some tools and potentially some resources to really track that down. Because when I think of people, when we had the warming center last year in City Hall, I mean, I met several individuals who were here who have vouchers, and they were really stressed about the fact that they felt like they were running out of time, and they just couldn't find a unit. And it's just incredibly heartbreaking to think about how many families might be out there that just can't find a unit. And I'd like to figure out, working with your team and with the city team, what we might be able to do. I don't believe in the method of paying people necessarily to do that, because I think it's just, it's fair housing. It's, it's the right thing to do. If you have a vacant unit, we should be filling it with somebody who can pay fair rent. So I'd love to just keep that going and see how, what we might be able to do as a council to, to help from a policy perspective.
Absolutely. And then just to also speak to the issue about the time running out on the voucher, based on COVID and the fact that it's very difficult to find a housing, we have continually extended so that people don't get into a situation where their voucher expires while they're looking. So we're very, very generous with that because we understand how hard it is out there.
That's wonderful. I didn't know you could do that. Thank you. I'm glad you're able to do that for folks. And hopefully, that can give them some peace. But I know ultimately, finding a housing, finding a home would give them the most peace. So thank you, Rochelle and your team for answering my questions.
Oh, just one more thing, if it's okay. I know that the SARA program is something that is near and dear to your heart, Councilmember Valenzuela. And just before the meeting, we did find out that we received a new allocation of funding in the city. It's $777,000. So that will allow us to continue to process those applications for people who are really in the situation and looking for funding, especially those that are in the courts. So.
That is amazing news. That has really kept me up at night, because I think, I mean, you know, Mayor, I go on and on about how the cheapest way to, you know, deal with homelessness is to keep people from ending up on the streets in the first place if we can. So that's wonderful. Thank you. And I know you need a lot more money than that. So if anybody's listening who's got to spare a few thousand dollars sitting around, send them our way so that we can keep people off the streets. Thank you for what you're doing for that.
You're welcome.
On that note, if I may, is there any talk about a lame duck session in Congress, for example, after the election, to try to allocate more money? Because your waiting list is still, even despite this good news today, I think, we take every penny, right? Your waiting list is still, what, 14,000 households?
It's very, very long.
I mean, this is, talk about crisis. I mean, this is, we get thousands of people off the streets of Sacramento, by the way. Not enough, but thousands of people off the streets. The problem is, of course, that people are becoming unsheltered and homeless faster than we can get people off. And this is the, a key part of the answer, not the only answer, but key part of the answer. And it's been a really important heroic work that the agency has done to get this assistance to as many families as possible. But when you run out of money, you run out of money. And where's the, you know, this is where the federal government, we need more help here.
Absolutely. Well, the one thing for anyone who's listening out there is that we do still continue to have funds in, on the county side. So our county residents, we're still able to serve them. We have about 30,000, 30 million, excuse me, $30 million that's still available. But really, in terms of looking at the federal government, this is one of the things that they understand how difficult it is. And the reason we receive the 777 is reapportioning the money from communities that are not using it or don't need it. So because Sacramento has such a great need, that's why we continue to receive additional funds. But I think what I hear you saying is, the bigger picture is, is there going to be a continuing source? And to date, we have not heard anything to indicate that.
That's right.
People who live in the city that live in the county are not eligible.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protamgeta.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And you stole my thunder. First, I wanted to acknowledge and thank
Mean to.
It's okay. No, no. I mean, it was, it was my focusing point of, of my, my conversation here. And that is to want to thank, you know, SHRA for the work it's done. And I do want to, you know, acknowledge Sacramento Act, Sacramento Housing Alliance, who reached out during the pandemic and were asking to start a emergency rental assistance program. And it was actually this council, you know, we met with, with them to say, hey, we, we want to advocate to make sure that we actually get that started. I do want to also acknowledge, you know, Councilmember Larry Carr and Councilmember Steve Hansen, who joined me in the effort to push for this, to make sure that we had that approach. And, and so it, it gives me great pride that in the city of Sacramento, we led that effort. And then finding out that the county also, getting the county to follow through, but even better, creating a joint program. Because what we learned was that if we don't have good regional communication, so whether you live on one side of the street, where the, where the street signs are white and the other ones are green, that you, you know, we have family members on both sides, right? So I think this, this emergency rental assistance program, and the fact that we're getting another 770,000 to help people in the, in that transition time and their greatest need is, is great. But that started here because of an advocacy. I also want to thank my staff for, for helping, you know, put together some of those early meetings. And there was a lot of competing interests, you know, for our resources. But the fact that we got this going also led to an example for what the, the rest of the state did. And so it, I'd like to thank that effort. Now, you'll go to the RAD program, which is a pretty RAD program, I would say, for those of us who grew up in the 80s and 90s. But again, you know, this is the, the Rental Assistance Demonstration Initiative is, is another great piece that, that goes to, when you think about outcomes, I, I like to point to the, you know, many people point to the, the 2002 Point in Time Count as a, as a complete, you know, challenge that we're facing, the struggles. But if you look at it, you know, one of the reports, while we still have a lot of work to do, the, the Point in Time Count identified that 31% decrease in families, households with children who were unsheltered since 2019. I mean, that is, that is a huge number. And that just goes to show that if we help the, those families in, in that emergency situation, transition, and being able to find stability, and then linked to workforce training and linked to childcare, then, then we keep them from being on the street. When we link all those sort of services so that folks can get into a better paying job, and get into stability, and get into good housing, then we can reduce the number of families from falling in, in the, in the tragic situation that we've seen. And even before the pandemic, we started moving in that direction. So all of these efforts, I think, are, are what show that actually we've done a reduction in family households with children who, who are out there. We still have a long way to go in the general population of, of people who are unhoused. But that is a huge victory that, that should be commended. So I wanted to, one, recognize that, thank that. And then, yes, echo the fact that without the federal government coming in, and the state as well, to support these efforts on emergency transitional housing, to make sure that we're keeping people where they are so that they can keep that stability, it's critical. But there is a question, I think, that the council member Shanir brought up, and that is, you know, if residents who are in, in a city jurisdiction, whether it be Sacramento, or Rancho, or Al Grove, who live within the county, why they are not eligible for county funds even though we're all within a county jurisdiction? So what's the, what is the restriction on, on, on that aspect? Because I, I think that we should be making sure that regardless of where people are in the county, we, we keep them from falling into an unhoused situation or an unstable housing situation.
Well, the city actually is a large enough in terms of its population to receive its direct allocation. So the city received their direct allocation, and the county received theirs. Now, had the city been smaller in terms of population, then yes, the county would encompass the city and would actually be able to use it in both those jurisdictions. But because the city of Sacramento is considered a very large city, they got their money directly.
And so it goes, it goes back to, I think, the lessons learned about the SARA program. When we were able to link things together and make things work cooperatively together, is there any conversation about how these funds are, are used, where the city can draw down, but also make sure that we're, we're not missing any gaps and, and tapping into those resources?
So
To better be effective with our dollars. So yes, the city is getting some, the county's getting some, you know. How, how can we, how can we make sure we're most effective?
Well, one of the things we're doing is that our particular program is seamless. So even though we get money from the city and the county, and we deal with all of the contracting associated with that, it's still very seamless to our residents. And the program is no different. If you're in the city versus the county, the rules are exactly the same.
And the same thing with the, the, on the, on the apartment side, or the owner's side, or the rental side?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Well, I appreciate that. And again, I, I want to, I mean, continue to advocate on our efforts on that aspect. I have one last question here, and that is, you know, I received concerns that, and I don't know if this is true or not, but I guess this is the time to clarify since it's the budget time, but that there's been concerns that the resident training program may be cut or eliminated. And, and this is one of those training programs that help job training into even jobs like custodial services. I know that's how I paid for college. I got in night shift as a custodian and other job training. So is, is that true? Is the residential training program looked at being cut or eliminated?
That is not true. That is really one of the core elements of SHRA. We take great pride in our resident training program. We did have a dip in the resident training program during COVID, because it was difficult to recruit people to come and join the program. But now that we seem to be turning the corner in that regard, we will ramp up. But no, there is no, absolutely no way that we are decreasing our resident training program.
And that's, that's the, the answer I wanted to hear. Thank you very much. Well, Mr. Mayor, with that, I, I want to, again, I think, just commend the work of that being discussed here earlier when we started our meeting, making sure that we're linking housing with workforce, with all of the support services to get people on their feet and into a future path. I mean, this is, this is great work. And with that, I'll move the staff recommendation and open and close the public hearing.
Very good. Let's move. Before I turn over to the vice mayor, I just want to further clarity on the question Councilmember Mayor Protamgeta was asking. The county, I understand why the city gets its separate allocation, but the county allocation, is it at all based on the entire county population, including the city?
No, not the city of Sacramento.
Not the city. So their allocation, okay. Then that makes sense, that, that they would be separated in that way.
Because they're, they're three times as large in terms of population, and that's kind of how it played out with the funds as well.
Okay. Very good. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah. So first of all, I can see that you got creative about how to present all your projects in a way that wouldn't take too long, because you have such a robust packet. And sometimes, it takes a while to get through it. So I love that you did the video. It was really great. And it had some glimpses of, you know, most of the projects that you're doing. And, and then you're able to supplement it with questions with specific about your budget. So I can tell that there was probably a pretty long conversation at SHRA about how do we get this information conveyed across? Good job. I think that was really good. You know, there's some obvious things that we need to focus on in the next year or so here. And workforce housing is definitely one of them. And, you know, we've really focused on things like the hotel conversion projects, which are great and still needed. And, and we don't have enough of that housing either. But the one step up from that is really a missing piece. We've talked about it a lot, too, haven't we, Rochelle? And, you know, hopefully, we'll get some state assistance on ways that we can pay for that. But in the meantime, I know this council's very focused on it. I know the mayor's very focused on it. And I just, you know, from, from the seat I'm in, want to say to you, thank you for, for continuing to move it to the top of the conversation pile until we can get to a place where we can just add, add more inventory. It's, it's not a uniquely Sacramento problem. It is a California problem. But we, we definitely are, are impacted by it here in Sacramento. And it's something that I'm sure each of my colleagues, I definitely hear about it every day, that people, especially young people, just can't, can't really afford without teaming up with other people places to live in Sacramento. And we're going to have to figure that out. And I was really touched by, you know, some of the staff that were there to see the hotel conversion open. And they too are housing insecure. conversion open, and they, too, are housing insecure. So we have a few layers to work on here. I did also want to just say to a couple of my colleagues, because I heard some of them ask you about the vouchers, and obviously, we have so many people out there looking for ways to use them, but and that's, we have to do a better job of making that wait shorter. However, I do want to say our office has come across a number of times where people were worried that their voucher was going to expire, and they were in between housing or waiting for something. And your office has been phenomenal about working with Maisha on our team to extend those vouchers. So that is one thing I would say to my colleagues, when you come across a person who calls for help with needing an extension on their voucher, that's something SHRA has been really good about with our office, so should that become a need. And I think I just want to say to you guys, thank you for continuing to beat this housing drum over and over and over until we can, you know, make lots and lots of progress. So thank you for being here and thanks for that great presentation.
Agreed. Thank you very, very much. It's a broad array of really.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'll second.
Broad scope of really important work. Thank you. Let's call the roll.
All in favor?
What's that?
All in favor?
Oh, I'll keep doing that, I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's much easier, by the way. I don't know why, getting this habit of calling the roll, but I'll condition myself otherwise here.
I'm going to have years of calling roll.
I guess that's what it was, right. So let's go to the next item, which is item 20, the TEFRA hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Claudia Lara, and I'm an analyst with the City's Treasures Office. With me today are Kevin Dobson of the Capital College and Career Academy, also known as CCCA, and Josh Winter of Western Solutions, acting on behalf of the California Enterprise Development Authority, also known as CETA. Kevin and Josh are both available after my brief remarks to respond to any questions that may arise regarding the project details of tax exempt, sorry, project details or tax exempt financing. This evening, we ask that a public hearing be conducted on behalf of CCCA in person to the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, known as TEFRA, of the Internal Revenue Code. CCCA proposes to obtain a tax exempt financing in the amount not to exceed of 20 million for the purpose of acquiring, renovating, remodeling, equipping, and furnishing the real property located at 501 Arden Way and 2295 Forest Street in Council District Two in Sacramento. CETA, a joint powers of authority of which the city of Sacramento is a member of, will be the issuer of the tax exempt debt for the benefit of CCCA. In order for all or a portion of the debt financing to qualify as tax exempt debt, TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which the project to be financed is located, to allow for public comment on the proposed tax exempt financing. It is important to note that the bonds issued by CETA for the benefit of CCCA will be the sole responsibility of CCCA, and there is no financial obligation by the city. With this, it is my request and recommendation that the city council conduct a requested public hearing, and upon conclusion of the hearing, pass the resolution in your agenda package approving the issuance of CETA tax exempt bonds for the benefit of CCCA. This concludes my remarks. And once again, both Kevin Dobson and Josh Winter are available to answer any project specific or tax exempt financing questions.
All right, thank you very much. So they're here in case we have questions. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
I have no speakers on this item, Vice Mayor.
Okay, colleagues. Councilmember Guerra.
I have no questions, but if if Councilmember Liloey isn't going to move or open and close the item, I'll do that, but I'll leave it to.
Did you want to make a motion? Councilmember Liloey?
Yes, actually, I think this is a great project for District Two, well needed. I've been, I've had the pleasure of meeting Kevin on several occasions. This is a great program for the youth. I cannot be more supportive. So with that said, if there's no public comment, I'd like to move and close.
No problem. I think you already have a second. Mayor Protem Guerra, is that right?
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, you want me to take the motion for this? All right. Yep, I heard him say it. Councilmember Liloey opens and closes the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you. Thank you very much, the project components.
Thank you, Karen. Good luck.
Mayor, your last item.
Call the roll. Just kidding.
Mayor, you have some items for information only, but we have the supplemental item 23.
We have a supplemental item 23, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Assistant City Manager, before we take up this item, I have one correction to read into the record on the red line of the salary schedule, which is your attachment, too, where it says the effective date, it should read publication date. So I'd like that, Clerk, to be included in the record. With this item, we are recommending adoption of the attached resolution with one change to only include the following salary increase. Effective February 12, 2022, the annual salary of the city manager shall be $406,525. If approved by council, the city attorney will draft a revised contract for execution to reflect council action. This concludes my presentation.
Mayor, okay?
Yeah, just clarity. Is it clear?
Yeah, her motion has removed the 30 days in.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, her correction to the record.
That's fine. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Assistant City Manager Milstein. Appreciate it and appreciate your modification. I do see a lot of members of the staff, the executive team, in the audience, and I just wanted to ask, if you're all here in support of this, would you just stand up? Is this why you're here? All right. Understood. Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to move the staff recommendation, please.
My second.
Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you very much for the time, and I want to appreciate my colleagues for some really robust and, I think, positive conversations today in closed session. I'm feeling really good about where we're at and where we're going, and I hope the conversations today, I'm very confident, as a new council come in, will lead us to an even better place. For me, this item is not, I'm not looking at this just through Howard as a person or his dedication to his job, which is, this is a significant amount of money. And frankly, this would be different if we hadn't just given, potentially for me, if we hadn't just given our unions who work under the city management team less than half of this percentage increase in their salaries. But I guess in short, and I don't want to belabor the point, I just, I won't be supporting this proposal from the city manager tonight, with all respect, Howard, and to your work and your team. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. In my time on council these last eight years, I've worked with Howard on so many projects and found him to be the most excellent city manager I could hope for. And, you know, he has so much respect for staff and is always looking out for staff. And he's made tremendous selections for senior management. I think that his work has been exemplary. And yes, it is a lot of money, and I think he deserves every single penny of it. So I'm happy to support.
Ben Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, I too join my colleague in supporting this motion. We have an excellent city manager who's been here with us for six years, and especially been here during the tough period of time during the pandemic to lead us and to lead the charge to make Sacramento a better city. I can't find a better teammate that I want to work with. I can't find a better partner that I want to be on my team, and I want to support this and move it forward. So I am excited to support this motion.
Is there public testimony?
Yes, Mayor, I have one hand raised to make comments on this item. It's from Lambert Davis. Mr. Davis, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I definitely am opposed to this city manager receiving any promotions based upon, and I just heard Mr. Jennings say, the last six years, the pandemic has only been two years. And in the last six years, this person, based upon what I have studied, and by the way, I have never seen a black person in a race scandal in City Hall, but he has been caught in at least three scandals. One, HR Barnum and Bailey scandal, which was terrible to some of the black employees inside City Hall. Then I noticed the Sacramento Bee said that they had difficulty cutting checks loose to underserved communities, which I'm from. And then the final smoking gun for me, I'm not even talking about the Rails grant that was altered and sabotaged in that department, but there was a memo that was sent out on my family last year, and I didn't even know about it until he got emotional and tipped his hand. And we found out later that it had been sent to the mayor and city council, but it hadn't been CC'd to the Davis family, which filled out all the paperwork. That's a violation of the Brown Act, and I don't, and I'm, I agree with with City Councilman Valenzuela. That's a lot of money for somebody who rarely stays in the chamber. He goes in and out of the chamber, coming in and out with the phone. He talks a lot during the presentations, and I noticed tonight, he was front and center at attention because he's scheduled to get a raise. And I'm the boldest one in Sacramento to say that, because that behavior has really been cruel to my family, and had it not been for the Davis family and my supporters, the millennials.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Yes, do not give him a raise.
Thank you for your comments.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Liloey?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Pass this. Thank you. Move on to the next item. Are there council ideas and questions or public testimony and items not on the agenda?
Do you have public testimony for not on the agenda?
Let's take a couple of public testimonies on the agenda, then I know I have a comment.
Thank you. The first speaker is Yana Manduhano, and then McWorthy. So Yana Manduhano, McWorthy, then Judith Escuera Sheldon.
Okay, I, this is completely impromptu, but I wrote a memoir a few years ago, and it has to do with a lot of things that Sacramento actually corrected. But here's an account of what it was like, what mental health services, what police help was like in like 2009 and things like that. And I think that it also has Native American themes, because I'm Native American, so there's no escaping that. And now that there's one of the largest casinos in Northern California in Sacramento County, well, I don't know, I guess this is a city, but you're going to have residents here, and it's impacted already, you know, even some of the casinos outside of the county have impacted Sacramento. We have bus stops that'll take you to the casinos and things like that. And so it deals with different kinds of disenrollments. I'm a member, I'm an enrolled citizen of the Pasca Inta Band of Nulak Indians, and we had one of the craziest disenrollments in Northern California. It was actually a result of adding people to the membership after we got recognition. So we're very unique, but it's definitely something that isn't over yet, because anybody who has been disenrolled, which has happened in California, should still be taken care of. And I think that, I don't know if there's any place for that in the city, you know, as far as homelessness and things like that, but it's something to consider, and it's Native American Heritage Month, so I was just going to mention this. Since I'm here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For everything you do.
Thank you. Next speaker is McWorthy, then Judith Escuera Sheldon.
Please proceed, and I'll work on that.
People, take a look at your charter. That's where your problem lies in the city. When does the charter meet? Not one person on that charter is on, you voted for. None more. Now, that charter got a Mickey in it for district, for four districts that the mayor in this charter support, but we don't even know what the minutes are. When do they meet? We have four districts that the city manager and mayor choose the person to put in that district, and then they're back. That man right there could tell you a whole lot. Now, that's how Allen come in, that's how Carr come in, that's how Rick come in. You got to cut that out. That's that's type of garbage you got to go. They own a house in the district. They don't, it's not residential district. They own a house or business in the district. But you accept that because you can control them. Jim Public don't know anything about it. Jim Public don't even know there's such thing as a charter. Everybody in there was elected, not one person was voted on a hearing to the Jim Public. It's been going on for years. This one, Mean Corn hooked up. Corn had five votes, but he needed to put those people in place where he has seven votes. That's what's all about, people. Wake up and understand, this city is a whole house government. It needs to be stopped. And we're looking at what's going to come up in a few months here. You're going to tell a lot about property. People, if you got a piece of property, go and look at what the value of that property. If you got a problem with your bills, file Chapter Seven, because the bank not going to lend you no money on the house. Look at what the government doing, 100%. You cannot get a bank to lend you 100%. Stay convinced alone. We don't have a man that come in here after the guy bought our Twitter. That's all we need, that kind of money in here, and we could turn this city upside down because we would buy property and put people in it that deserved to be in it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Judith Escuera Sheldon, then Francine Jackson.
Okay, thank you for listening to my comment. The issue I would like to present to the council is the city of Sacramento's inadherence to its own city code. To that end, I now have a $304,000 lien on my property. Before 2021, I had no mortgage, no liens. I owned my property outright. Before 2021, I used to receive notices and orders and instructions to appeal with each code and/or building violation, per Sacramento City Codes, Chapter 8.96, Article 4 and Article 5. In 2021, with the city attorney now involved in my code and building compliance, all notices, orders, and instructions to appeal were suppressed. Some of these violations were plainly fraudulent. So I'd like to ask the city council to send a letter to Senator Pan, letting him know that the council views arbitrary adherence and enforcement by its community development, code compliance, building and planning department as heinous. These atrocious acts make victims of property owners. It is an absolute abuse of power. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Francine Jackson, and then Lambert Davis.
My name is Francine Jackson, and I have lived, I live downtown in Alkali Flat, and I've lived there for 25 years. My husband, Bill Masters, has lived there for 45 years. And I have a question. Last Saturday night, we have a medium-sized encampment across the street from our house. And last Saturday night, they decided to have a bonfire, and they lit a fire on the sidewalk across from our house. And I called 911. I was directed to the fire department, and the fire department came. I was directed to the fire department, and the fire department came, and they drove by, and they slowed down, said something, and then drove on. Two very nice policemen came up on bicycles, and they informed us that it is perfectly legal because the city council has deemed it so to have a fire on the sidewalk in the city of Sacramento. I would like to know if that is true. They had a fire on the sidewalk?
It, it is not legal to have a fire on the sidewalk, and whoever might, whoever told you that?
Multiple officers.
Well, that needs to be corrected, if that's the case, and I haven't, we haven't heard any of the officer's side, or whether something might have been misinterpreted. But it is not legal to have fires on the sidewalk.
They told me you should go to the city council meeting, and you should ask the city council.
I agree with the mayor, and I have Assistant City Manager Mario Lara. He will follow up with you to get the specifics on this because those types of interactions potentially will be on body, on camera video, so.
Okay, well, the fire department and the police department did nothing. And in Alkali Flat, we have had unhoused, and really, through the years, we all live together. I mean, we've been there many, many years, um, but lighting a fire on the sidewalk, it just.
Kinda crosses the line, doesn't it?
It does.
Yes.
It does. Okay, thank you.
So maybe we can look into?
Yeah, Mario's in the back, and I know my staff is in the back too, and I think you might have reached out, and they were trying to track down what happened as well. But thank you, and we'll address this.
Mr. City Manager, if I may, since it's on the same topic?
Yep.
I think it would be great if we could have, um, Assistant City Manager Mario Lara, just have a, not tonight, obviously. Just a good conversation with PD as far as what can and cannot be done. Because we were on to a few issues just very similar to this resident, and they've been told almost the same thing, that there's not a whole lot we can do. So I would greatly appreciate if we can have this conversation with the department, and just let them know what their responsibilities are and whether or not. That would be great. Thank you very much.
I think, I think we could do that one better. We're in the process of preparing a memo for the mayor and council, and also for the public on the protocols when we, uh, go to address encampments and issues like this. And I think it's just good for transparency that everyone understands how these, uh, um, issues are prioritized and what the protocols are. So I, I will get that teed up for our council.
I, I would greatly appreciate it. Because I had the same situation with one of my residents actually this afternoon, where two unhoused individuals right in, up in front of her yard had axes, and they were threatening her. So when she called 911, it took about an hour and a half before the police department got there, and they were really, they couldn't do that much. So I appreciate if you can look into that. Thank you very much.
You know, I just gonna say, I mean, I love our police department and our officers, but what we just heard tonight is not uncommon. We hear this all the time, uh, that line officers are saying, "The city council won't let us do XYZ." And I'm sorry, support you all the way, but that needs to be addressed because, uh, we put out FAQs, and we've put out, uh, we're, we're very clearly, how many times, well, I say it from the dais, people are engaging in serious illegal conduct. It does not matter whether, whether they're homeless, unsheltered or not. And I, we, we want the officers to the best of their ability, given the resource and how far you're stretched. That's a different issue to enforce the law. This is not the city council saying, or the mayor saying, "Don't enforce the law."
Mayor, I cannot agree with you more, uh, but I, I would love for, um, Assistant City Manager Mario Lara to work with the chief to figure out if we can actually, you know, figure out when this transpired, and if there's video, if there's, uh, officers we need to talk to about it, we will absolutely do that.
Thank you. Council, let's hear from, are we done with?
I have two more.
Two more? Okay.
Next speaker is Lambert Davis, and then our final speaker is Angela Smith.
Not, not again. I think we've heard everything we need to do, Mr. Davis.
Well, no, I need to, it's comments not on the agenda, Mayor. You can't just cut people off like that. That's why Jeff Harris got in trouble.
Well, then you go right ahead. It's just, I think.
Yeah, let me finish what I have to say. It's, it's completely different. Uh, two weeks ago, I saw a double standard inside the chambers. There was a man that walked up to the rostrum, uh, walked up to talk to the diocese, and he identified Vice Mayor Ashby. And nobody cut him off and said, "Hey, you can't just talk to her." And then when he finished, the vice mayor came out and talked to him. I've never seen anybody on the rostrum come out and talk to McWorthy, uh, in a, in a cordial manner, and they definitely haven't come out and talked to me. That's a violation of the Brown Act inside the chamber. And I believe there's a violation of the Brown Act tonight because I've studied your Brown Act workshops. That's the thing about me, Mayor. I go to a lot of meetings. And I learned at the, at one meeting about the Brown Act that whatever is on the agenda should be addressed. So I think the city attorney and whoever else is responsible should take off the city manager's report because it's on there. And I, as a taxpayer, want to see him do the city manager's report. He's the highest paid, he has six assistants. The public deserves to hear the city manager's report. And that's the opposite of what you were cutting me off for. I'm entitled to speak on matters not on the agenda. You know, cut some of these other people off who are allowed to get people to come out of the rostrum and talk to them. People are very harsh towards Mr., uh, Worthy, and he's just speaking. And I've never used profanity towards any of them.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, uh, watch the Brown Act violations.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Angela Smith.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Hi, yes, I am the resident Sean Mealy was talking about, um, who was having issues with the unhoused individuals across the street from my house. Um, I know the city and the state have a, a large and concerning homeless problem, um, that it's gonna take a lot of time and strategic effort to solve. But what I want to address is the lack of response when a person, homeless or housed, behaves in a way that is threatening and unsafe to themselves and others around them, and what we need to do about it. Um, on October 20th, in front of my house, an individual walked up and down the street. He was clearly mentally distressed. He had a bow and arrow. He was punching the air. He was at times cocking the bow and arrow. He's talking to himself, stopping randomly, clearly in mental distress. I called 911. I was told that there was another critical issue going on in the city. No one ever came. Um, he was out there for quite some time. I just couldn't go outside at all. Uh, the, I, uh, have a large encampment around my house, and I take pictures of what's going on so I can record the fire damage, so I can send these reports to 311. So when new camps arrive, uh, workers can come out and give services to people. If I see children, um, I, I do applaud how the city has been responsive when children are out there, and I report it, that they come out and intervene and do something so they're not sitting on in tents. Um, but some homeless really have a problem with that. Today, two homeless women really took offense to it, started harassing me, calling me every vulgar word in the book. I have it all on camera. They said that they would beat my ass. Um, I called 311, 911, three different times, reported the situation. It was growing when I came out to help have my husband come in, um, through to our gated driveway. Uh, they were out there, they were kinda just swinging, uh, one of them was swinging the axe kind of randomly. Um, it's, you know, just insane. After an hour and a half, police did finally come. They said that they will remove them hopefully next week because they can't do it because it's raining right now.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I truly hope the police do come by next week.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
We don't have your phone number, and I don't want you to have to say it publicly.
I, I have it, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Laloe, okay.
I've talked with Sean Mealy, yeah.
Okay, wanna make sure Councilwoman Laloe and the city manager's office gets in touch with you directly. Maybe you already have, I'm sorry, but let, let's continue this, okay?
Yes, he has been in touch. I appreciate him, I appreciate Officer Powder, yeah, what they've been doing, and I hope we can do something to resolve it.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. We do have counsel ideas and questions. Begin with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to, our arts division has been really busy, and they have been helping sponsor a lot of great projects around town through these I O B matching funds. And one of them is a new documentary, um, called The Invisible Homeless, that will screen, it's already been screening, but I am co-hosting a screening with Wellspring Women's Center at the Guild Theater, actually, in District 5, um, this Friday night. Um, folks are welcome to come. It's a free event that starts at 6:30, and we'll also be offering ways for folks to plug in, to help. Also, related to that, since we did have our first rain today, yay, um, I'm really hoping, Mr. City Manager, that we might get an update on the plans for warming center activations this winter. Um, I know every time our emergency, um, department is working hard to find locations and hours, and, and predictability is so important for unhoused folks that they know where to go and when and what the thresholds will be. So any update on that would be great. And I know my colleagues up here who sit on the regional transit board would happily help coordinate with shuttles, which I know they've done in the past to ensure folks have a predictable way to get to and from, um, when it gets cold out, which is coming down upon us pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. We had our second annual Dia de los Muertos celebration at Stanford Settlement this Sunday. It was a very happy event and, um, well, well-received. There are about 300 community members came. Uh, it was really meaningful to the Northgate community, and, um, I just wanted to give a shout out to Gardenlands Northgate Neighborhood Association and Marbea Sala, who was instrumental in, in, uh, producing the event. They did a great job, and a good time was had by all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, that's great. Another great event out there. Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to take this moment to just do a quick announcement. Um, this Saturday, November 5th, from 10:00 to 1:30 at the 24th Bypass Park by Martin Luther King Library, we will be hosting the Metta View Family Festival. This is a free event hosted by my office, Urban Land Institute Sacramento and Civic Thread. Um, we're gonna be celebrating, celebrating everything great about Metta View. There's also a social bike ride to the park, starting at the Metta View Starbucks, uh, off of Amherst. So if you ride a bike, meet us there at the Metta View Starbucks, uh, to head over to the 24th Bypass Park. There's gonna be lots of multicultural performances, kid-friendly activities, a bike rodeo, food, and a lot more. And so just really wanted to invite everyone who's listening right now, and my colleagues, to join us this weekend. And then last but not least, um, next week, city council will not be meeting because it is an incredibly important day. It's election day. Um, and so I just wanted to take this moment to let everyone know, uh, please go out and vote, uh, no matter how you vote, it's so important to make sure that you exercise your right to vote. And so just wanted to remind folks that we are exactly one week, less than seven days away from election. There are a lot of incredible races and, that I can't speak on, and a lot of ballot measures, but really wanna just encourage folks to do their education, to read information, and then really exercise your right to vote, um, this election. It's incredibly important. I know that some of our vote centers are already, already open, but all vote centers will be open on Saturday, on this Saturday. And so really just wanted to do that public service announcement and encourage all of you to, you know, turn up to vote. Uh, if you're Mong, make sure you go bomba, and if you're Latino, vota, right? Make sure you vote. It is so important to be part of democracy and to rise up. Um, that's the only way we can make change in this city. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna join my colleague in encouraging everyone to vote as well. And she said all the great reasons as to why it's so important, so I will not repeat it, but I do wanna support her. Uh, I wanna let you know a couple of things that are happening in District 7. One, we have a Sacramento River Parkway cleanup. And that's gonna take place on November the 5th. That's Saturday, November the 5th, at Garcha Bend Park in the Pocket, right off of Pocket Road. And it's gonna take place from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. So we encourage you to join us, and if you have youth that need, uh, service hours for school, this is a wonderful opportunity for them to get service hours while they help us to clean up Garcha Bend on Pocket Road from 1:00 to 4:00 Sat, Saturday, November the 5th. And then also, every Saturday, there's a farmer's market that continues, that happens every single Saturday. Uh, Saturday morning at the Elks Lodge located at 6446 Riverside Boulevard. They have produce, they have bread, they have flowers, and so much more that's available from all local vendors. The market runs weekly from 8:00 to, to noon, and parking is available, so you don't have to worry about parking. Uh, and you can get more information by going to elcs6.com and/or contacting the District 7 office. We encourage you to come out and support the farmer's market and the Sacramento River Park cleanup. Thank you, Mayor.
You very much, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Shenier?
Thank you, Mayor. Back on August 31st, Councilmember Vang and I asked to put on the log, um, a youth advisory position on the council. Uh, I was planning to go to the youth commission on Monday and speak to them about this and found out that we can't do that because in our rules and procedures, it says that the council would have to refer, uh, something or an item to the youth commission before I could come speak. So what I'd like to do is ask the city clerk to research other municipalities legislative processes for referring ordinances, resolutions, and policies to pertinent commissions for review and the role of the clerk in those processes. I think this affects more than the youth commission, and affects any of us wanting to go to any of our commissions, um, to talk to them about issues that are pertinent to the council.
So I just, out of curiosity, um, you are a, a citizen of the city of Sacramento? You happen to be an elected official? I, I don't understand how anybody could prohibit you from showing up to the youth commission and speaking your mind about anything that you want.
This is what I was told. Susanna, do you wanna take a whack at that one?
Because he isn't an ordinary citizen of the city of Sacramento. He's an elected official.
So I, I think there is a fix here for us, and, and again, I think this is a generic, uh, issue that would affect us going to any of our commissions. And I've actually done this before, when we put, uh, young people on a few of our boards and commissions.
I violated, I violated this several times.
Yes, you did.
Yes, I have.
So.
I guess proudly so. I, I, I don't know what to say.
But we want it, we wanna make it right. So, uh, we're asking the clerk to look at this, and.
Okay.
Mindy, I'll give you the actual language.
Let's fix that law, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I, I have a comment. Uh, first of all, thank you, Councilmembers Vang and Jennings, for saying what should be obvious, but isn't always when you look at some of our rates of voter participation. Please get out and vote. God, come on. If you don't vote, then it's hard to complain. So please vote. Really important in the capital city. And then I wanna make a political comment about campaigns, and this may surprise you, and don't worry, nobody worry. Uh, but this is on my mind, and it's really bothering me. Campaigns are not for the faint of heart. Um, you know, First Amendment, things get said, harsh things, back and forth, people are characterized in certain ways. And then there's a line, and sometimes that line is crossed. And I wanna, and we have a very proud, active, and organized LGBTQ community. And it's been reported now across the nation that this guy, Stephen Miller, from Trump's world, from the so-called America First Organization, is organized massive, uh, radio and mail ads targeting transgender kids in at least 25 states across the political spectrum, in Texas, in Illinois, and in Michigan. And you know, we all have lived history, and we all know, and we all believe that it's our duty to call out, uh, anytime people are demonized, um, or are seen as the other in, in ways that are mean, that are discriminatory, and that are demeaning. And I just wanna call that out. I can't say it better than the way President Derrick Johnson, the president of the National NAACP, said it about this strategy. He said, "This is playing to the lowest common denominator of hate and otherizing, targeting the LGBT community. When you create this type of negative reaction to individuals who don't present any societal grief, you only create space for people to feel justified for attacking them physically and through public policy." Right on. Gotta call it out. There's no room for hate. There's no room for hate of any kind. And this is happening throughout our country in the midst of these midterm elections and I just wanted to say something about it. Thank you. There's anything else to come, nothing else to come before the city council? We're, we are adjourned.